Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us, for folks who are joining us in the gallery. It's nice to see so many people there. And we'll begin, so I'm going to call us to order. It's 6:30. And I would like to begin by acknowledging the Getumden Clan and the Witselten people on whose unceded traditional territory we live, work, and play. And the public is notified that this meeting is being recorded in webcast and a notice explaining that is on the bulletin board outside these chambers. Counsel, we have an agenda motion to approve, please. Counselor Raven, Counselor Elliott, any additions? All in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And welcome, Counselor Patterson. We've got you on the screen, so keeping my eyes up there, too. Okay, first up, we have a couple of delegations. So the first delegation is welcome, Access Smithers. I invite you to come to the delegation table. And I know you're familiar with this process. But as you come, I'll just remind us all that we have about 10 minutes for your presentation and then five minutes for some questions from council. And I have distributed the single page that Ms. Jones gave me. And I think you remember, but if you press the circle on the mic stand and draw that mic down, we'll be able to hear you and we'll use the mics. Counselor Patterson won't be able to hear the proceedings if we're not using the microphones. So welcome. Invite you to introduce yourselves for the benefit of everyone here and in the gallery, and I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, I'm Pat Jones. I'm with Access Smithers. I've been with it for a lot of years now. And this is
I'm Glenna Snow Diamond. I know most of you and thank you so much for inviting us. I have been involved with Access Smithers since my husband Joseph and grandson Adam and I moved here in 2010. And I was invited to join the Measuring Up the North Smithers Committee at that time. And so have helped with the transition into Access Smithers. That's 16 years ago starting, so we've done lots.
So just to give you a very, very brief overview, as Glenna said, we, the group basically started as from measuring up the north and in 2009. And we have been meeting since then. For a number of years, we were, Access Smithers was actually part of the town committee of the town and that stopped a number of years ago. However, we have been very lucky with the interest from not only just the counselors, but the staff as well, because they keep on top of us and get, come to our meetings and we really appreciate the involvement that the town has had with us doing the various things that we get notify you about around town. So things we have done, we initiated the annual access awards. So we're back at the chamber now trying to get the chamber to get that award going again. We've done smile lights for the bicycles and walkers and things like that. The yellow painting of the entrances on Main Street where they're uneven, we've been involved in that. We help put the age-friendly project together that the town now has. The accessibility awareness report, the downtown accessibility grant, we help distribute. We help with the safer homes development. We were a supporter definitely of getting public bathrooms out and around. The, we do do booths at various events over the year. We are involved with talking with emergency readiness. We were involved in getting the timing of the lights across the highway lengthened so that we could get across the highway in time. We have been supporting the development of a para-transit, so the ability to for people with wheelchairs and needing other accessibility to be, get onto the transit around. The we have been doing awareness to the effects of people on breathing allergies and challenges. We've been involved with B C parks and the rebuild of the Tai Lake accessibility, if you've been down there. We maintain relationships with the Spark B C, the offices of the seniors advocate, B C and federal MPs, the B V naturalists, Wet Cinqua, the regional district, Chamber of Commerce, Commerce and the Downtown Businesses Associations. Currently, we have, we're working with the town on the Ambleside Park. And encouraging the town to officially name it Ambleside. I think it is on the map, but getting a sign up there and getting a bench that faces the marsh, the wetlands. We have been involved in the downtown parking for handicapped accessible parking. We've continued to advocate for loop systems, which we're so pleased that the town here has a loop system. Lighting entrances, employment opportunities, we've been, been involved in looking into fire safety in multi-apartments and co-op buildings. We are a resource, of course, for the community as well and hospital accessibility, which came up in 2019 when we got hit with not being able to, having to stand in lineups in the cold outside when you're going into the hospital, which wasn't terribly practical. And we have several things that we're going to be working on. My page here. What I, I did hand out a few of these. I wasn't aware personally that they should have been handed in a long time ago. So the map that's on the one that we handed out and a share, you can share, shows the bridge that we put in for for the Willavale Wetlands. So, and on the and on the other side, there is a photograph of our plaque which lists all the donors and as of June, June 1st, 2023, we had dispensed $36,000, $651.20 on the Willavale project. So that is donations and sponsorship, which is just absolutely fantastic for a town this size. So when we were developing the Willabell, what we call marsh, but apparently it should be termed a wetland, which we have now discovered. We were in partnership and are in partnership with the Ambleside developer, Jim Dobson, the Town of Smithers and the B V naturalists. We fundraised to develop the accessible loop trail because when we started you couldn't, you couldn't start at one end and go around in a circle and end up back there again. And one of the big chores was getting the bridge into place. The naturalists have put up bat and bird identification signs and also bat little houses. We lobbied the town, of course, to develop Ambleside Park. And the town has developed the sidewalk, a curb cut and the little area there in Ambleside. So you can overlook the park. What we're looking for right now tonight is to continue our partnership with the town and put together another resting area that will probably will have a, what's called a, let me look at it here. An smallest accessible chair, but also a rest, a leaning post, which is not the official term. Because many times you don't necessarily want to sit or can sit and you just want to be able to rest against something. And we've had people approach us about having that there. And we have a small amount of money, just under $2,000 left to be spent on the wetland. So yeah, leaning rail, that's what it's called. And if we need any money past that $1,800 that we have, of course, we would be looking at fundraising again. And perhaps donors for the leaning rail donor for a chair. Yep, that was about it for me. So are there any questions?
May I speak? So as you're perhaps aware, the primary focus of Access Smithers is an advocacy organization. We don't generally do projects. And, and this became a very big project for us, the Willavale project. And again, as Pat has identified, it's with great generosity that the community has come forward and provided the funding for us to work in partnership with the Town of Smithers. And when we made our original application to the town a few years ago now, a number of years ago, we were permitted the opportunity to establish five resting areas around that trail and a accessible picnic table. So we have done that. And when you're on the trail, you'll see that all of those benches have been located strategically in the areas that Pat has pointed out on the map. And then by the parking and the main entrance to the site, there is also an accessible picnic table. So we do not have the opportunity until we receive the approval from council to be able to establish another resting area. And that is why we've come today. One is because we would like to finalize and complete the project with the funding that has been donated so that we can clear that off of our commitment. And we considered that the most appropriate thing that we could request is an opportunity to put in another resting area, which would be between the, it would be adjacent to the front entrance where you have the accessible bench and the picnic table and then going down over the land bridge where you would have that new viewing area. And then if you continue to proceed, going to the excuse my directions, perhaps it's to the right, you've got that corner one, then you've got the corner bench. So we're asking if we could please have permission to put a resting area there so that people would be able to, if not, like for myself, I have extreme limitations now to walk any distances, but it would allow a person to be able to just stop there and be able to go there. And if they want to go on the rest of the trail, that would be great, too. So that was the primary reason for our request.
Thanks so much, Glenna and Pat, not just for being here tonight, but for all the years of work. Yeah, the dedication to making things better is astounding and the perseverance and tenacity are much appreciated. We're all better off for it. So thank you for that. Counsel, if there's any questions before Glenna or Pat, now's the moment. I don't see any questions. Yep, go ahead.
Might I also acknowledge that we have another member of the Town of Smithers Accessibility Advisory Committee here with us. And that's Wilma. And through, through her position with the Accessibility Advisory Committee, she has now joined the voice with Access Smithers. So I'd just like to acknowledge her as well.
Thanks for that. And so what we're going to do, we've got the request and you're probably already aware, but it'll come up a little bit later in the agenda and you're fully aware of our practice that we tend to hear, or we hear what you ask for this week. And there'll be a a report back from staff and we'll just respond to you at a later time. But yeah, again, I just want to say thanks for all of the effort to make things better for people. And I think I learned from you that, you know, if they're better for people who have perhaps challenges in some way, they're better for all of us. So we're all better off for it. So thank you very much.
And may I say one more thing? Access is inclusive, right? It's for everybody, everywhere. And I received a call yesterday from R M P in Ottawa. And there's a request for us to look at how to be able to improve the accessibility for via for, for people often on the trains here. So we will be discussing this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll just take a moment then. We have a second delegation, who are the representatives from the Volkle Valley Museum. So as you're able, I'll invite you to the delegation desk. And again, you are familiar with this process, but I invite you to introduce yourselves. And we have about 10 minutes for your presentation and a few minutes for questions from councils. So thanks for being here. Over to you.
Thank you. So yes, I am Kira Westby from the Volkle Valley Museum. We have Alison Watson with me from Plan 54. And we're here to present the, the end of a long project, our Smithers Community Heritage Register project. Alison will go into a few more details on the process, but this is, you said, the third, third time, I think we've come to council as we've worked on this project over the last two years. But I was looking back today in my, my notes and my stuff on the computer at work and our, the very first presentation of this to council is actually from December 2018, if you can stretch your brains back that far, when Harry Crystalbrink and I came to council to discuss the need for heritage planning in Smithers. And yeah, so it's, it's been a long, long process working on this. And unfortunately, Harry's not here to see the end, but I think he'd be pretty proud. So I'll turn it over to Alison.
Thank you. So over the next few minutes, I'll walk you through a quick recap of the project, the process that was followed. I'll highlight some of the contents of the final report, which is actually included under agenda item 1413 tonight. We'll look at the initial register list and then the implementation steps to kind of make it official. We'll look at the initial register list and then the implementation steps to kind of make it official. The bigger goal is really to make sure that council is comfortable with the Heritage Register and really to answer any questions that you might have. So whoever's operating the slideshow, they, okay, you know, two ahead. Yeah. And one more. Yeah, there we go. So just as a refresher, a community heritage register is essentially a list of properties that have heritage value in Smithers. It's officially recognized by local government through a council resolution. And it's really a local government planning tool to focus on heritage education, like double underline the education. It's not a regulation. It's not a designation. It's not a bylaw. It's not registered on a property's title. So next slide. So just to recap the process, it's, it's been a healthy timeline, I would say, but, but I think there was some good work done here. The first two stages, we came to council at the end of both stages. So the project began with research. Then we went into a community engagement stage where we really looked to identify some of the heritage values at a community level. There was then a documentation stage. So for each property that was identified, there needs to be what's called a statement of significance form completed. So I'm not going to say we did this. Kira did this. So yeah, just making sure that the properties that people from the community thought were of value had enough research to them to be included on the register. Step four was a review phase again. So starting this last October, ending last month, property owners were directly notified that their, by the letter from the museum, advising them that their property has been included on the register, inviting them to provide feedback and comments. We heard from nine of them. Most were positive. The ones that did have concerns were related to not being able to do any changes on their building, being the main concern. Once additional information was provided, everyone was, well, 99% of property owners were fine with it. Being that this is an educational tool. And now we're in the final stage, which is tonight. Next slide, please. So looking at the report under Ms. Chandran's report, further on in the agenda, it's essentially a ready to adopt and implement community heritage register for Smithers. It documents heritage values based on engagement. It aligns with the Local Government Act and the B C Register of Historic Places Documentation and includes some implementation steps and other ideas for how to support heritage in Smithers. So looking at the register itself, this initial register has 24 listings. It's a blend of residential, commercial, civic spaces and park spaces. And looking at the map on the next page, we see a fairly good distribution in the community. When we started the project, it was more about kind of downtown and Main Street and those obviously historic buildings and built form that we have. But through the process, this definitely expanded. So some of the, the park spaces and monuments in the community, we have both the former areas of what was known as Indian Town and Chinatown, both on this registry, which is kind of interesting. And really the idea is that this register is built on over time to really tell this collective interesting story of Smithers history as it relates to places. So next steps to implement the register, there's really three things that need to happen from the town side. One is to pass a council resolution that establishes the register. And then the next stage kind of happens within 30 days of the resolution. And that's to send the required documentations to the heritage branch. We have the contact and the paperwork all prepared. And then to notify the property owners that their property has been included on the register. And as a disclaimer, at any point, council can add and remove properties from the legislature, register through a resolution process. So I'll send it back to Kira here to go over a couple additional ideas and close the presentation.
Thanks. So as Alison was just saying, so we really would like the register to be considered a living document that's added to over time. And there's already actually a few additional properties that have been brought to our attention through homeowners. And what was really interesting is actually we had 23 properties up until about three and a half weeks ago. And the 24th was added because the homeowner came forward and said, well, why isn't mine included on there? So it's really great to see that people are interested in this and that there is buy-in from property owners who are proud of the history of the home or the building that they have. And they would like to see it included. So we do anticipate future additions. To facilitate that, we plan to maintain a page on our website that has the nomination forms. And I anticipate that, you know, once we get a few gathered, we would come to council again and say, here's the list of additional ones to be added. And just slowly start to, to build it over time. And the museum, of course, would continue to develop the statements of significance because that's one of the fun parts of my job is to do that research. We'd also like to recommend that the town work with both the museum and the Central Park Building Society to amend the existing bylaw that designates Central Park Building so that it has additional detail that was put into the statement of significance. The current bylaw just simply refers to the north, south and west walls. There's no real detail there about what are the, the characters of the building. So we'd really like to work to sort of beef up and expand that the, the way the designation is, is the designation bylaws currently worded in future. And several times throughout the process, we were asked whether there would be signage or markers for the buildings. The markers they have on the buildings in Telkwa came up over and over again of, well, is that going to, is this going to include that? So we would also like to continue to work with the town to develop plaques or interpretive signage to publicly recognize these buildings. There was property owners who were interested in that. Tourists are interested in that. Local community members are interested in that. So that's another project that we'd like to explore with the town in future as well. And I think that's, that's pretty well it. And I'd like, I would like to thank Ms. Chandran for all of her help from the, the town end of things. She's been really wonderful to work with and has written a very lovely staff report that looks great. So thank you again.
Thanks so much, Kira and Alison, for your work and enthusiasm and hang in there, Edness, reminding us how long it took. Counsel, questions or comments from the delegation? I have one. You answered one, Kira. So you probably answered the first one too, but so people, if they want to be in, when they see the registry, they just, they're going to contact you? So that's where the website listing is?
Yes, yeah. And I'm still, we're still trying to figure out the best way to present what's already on the register. And I was just speaking with Ms. Chandran about that earlier, that once it goes to the province, I think they have like a site where you can see like what they are. So in terms of presenting the current register, we're working on that. And yes, we would have the forums hosted on our website. If the town could perhaps have something on its website that mentions that it exists and, you know, go to the museum for more information, that sort of back and forth sharing of webpages would be great, but we can, I'm sure, work those things out as we move forward, how it will look and yeah.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Buchanan, but just with that last piece. So we have the recommendation on the official asks. And if we kind of go ahead with those tonight, that doesn't impede what you're talking about. There can be the future conversations. Okay, Counselor Buchanan.
Not a question, but just a comment. I really like the idea of plaques or signage for each of these 24 properties. I think that's a great idea. I think for tourists too, just to be able to wander around our community and see those and read those. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Yes, the, the museums had a walking tour for some time and it's been incorporated into that new brochure that tourism and Smithers have done too. So the, and people ask about where, what are the heritage buildings? Like this is something that tourists are really interested in. And yeah, I think it would be really great to, and it, I think that also adds to that pride of place and ownership for those property owners too, that, you know, they get to hang something like that on their building and, you know, have some of the older photos there too, from the museum's collection, I think, can make them look really sharp, actually.
Thanks. Anyone else? Oh, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Atchell. And thank you to the delegation for their presentation. Just two questions. Do people have the option to not be included in the register? I'm thinking more specifically like the private residents. And two, are there any financial supports from the province or other bodies that support funding to maintain these sites? Thanks.
So to answer the first question, yes, people can choose to not be on it. And we did have someone, when Alison said 99% of the folks where their, their questions were resolved. We did have one property owner who explicitly sent a letter saying, no, thank you. And okay, that's fine. This isn't something we're looking to, we want people to be excited about it. It's not something we are looking to force on people. And, and as Alison said, once most people understood that it's just an educational tool and it's a way to document these things beyond my brain and the museum's, you know, files in their sort of disorganized way on the computers and such that most people were happy with it. But yeah, if someone says absolutely no breaks, as Alison was just saying, a resolution can remove something in future as well. So it's not static. It's not meant to be imposed. And for the second question, I'll start, but I think you, or you, you, actually you should answer that. Thank you.
Yeah. So for, there's not a lot of, well, no grants I could find for privately owned properties to enhance their buildings. Nonprofits, yes. There are some different programs, if it's owned by a nonprofit or publicly owned property. But the big plus that you get if you're on a community heritage register is that you then qualify for the alternative compliance under the B C Building Code, which specifically states that your building must be included on a community heritage register. And it acknowledges that there are challenges when you do work to a heritage building.
And also in some cases, some municipalities end up developing their own programs to support preservation of these buildings. So in some cases, similar to like the downtown spruce up grants that the Town of Smithers does in some communities, they've come up with similar programs to help support heritage property. So that's a tool and the tool belts in future, should the town ever choose to look into something like that.
Thanks. Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands. So I will thank you and you're aware it's on the agenda coming up. So you're welcome to stay and join us for a meeting or as you wish. But thanks so much for your work. Okay, we are now at the section where there's public comment period. So I'm aware of at least one person who wants to speak. So if there is anyone in the gallery who wants to speak to something that is on the agenda tonight, I invite you to come to the delegation table. And when you get there, please just introduce yourself. And if you have the number, you can connect us to the item. So come on up. Okay, sorry. And I've had a reminder. No, it's good, Alison. Just for the, the sake of the person at the table and anyone else in the gallery who might be here to speak to the public opportunity to a specific item, that's next. So if you're here about bylaw 1974, the Hubert Street Road, there will be a subsequent opportunity. Otherwise, this is the moment for anything else. And Katie, that's what you're here for. So you're, you're up at the right spot. And just for the difference, so in the last, in the delegations, there is an opportunity for council to ask questions. This time it is just you. So it's just a presentation of information. There's not a Q and A afterwards. And you have your three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Katie Forsyth. I'm here to introduce myself and speak to my vision for the Airport Cafe and our funding request on Agenda Item 14.8. I am a socially focused entrepreneur with over 20 years in the food service industry and 12 years as a business owner. In early 2020, I identified a gap in the food waste solutions and went on to found a successful organic waste collection program that operated privately in the city of Kamloops for four years. Myself and my team diverted over a million pounds of food waste from the, the landfills and partnered with over 40 local businesses and farmers to deliver fresh and non-perishable locally sourced food to our 1,200 subscribers weekly. For my work in creating a circular business model, I was awarded Young Entrepreneur of the Year by the Kamloops District and District Chamber of Commerce, Environmental Leader of the Year. And in 2022, I was named B C Business 30 Under 30. I'm very passionate about local small business. I moved to Smithers for love and went back to school to complete my bachelor's of education. And I've been subbing part-time for the school district for the past two years. But I am an entrepreneur at heart. So this January, I decided to put in a proposal to open the Runway Cafe and Bar at the regional airport. I do feel like my expertise in restaurant management, sales and marketing, grant writing, implementing sustainable systems and increasing community impact does give me a unique lens than a typical cafe sort of venture or owner. It also checked the box for me in terms of being of service to my community. In my proposal, I did bring concerns around with an in-depth sort of revenue and expense projections that concluded that I feel without town support, this cafe venture will continue to turnover willing operators. The reality is that the location and existing cafe space has historically operated at a loss. And currently the cafe space doesn't have the tools, equipment, or even a welcoming atmosphere to be successful. So with the airport management support, we feel that it's essential for the town council to invest in initial improvements in the space. This could include basic items like comfortable seating, display shelving, plateware, cutlery, essential kitchen equipment and perhaps some real plants, something that kind of brings some space to the, to the, or life to the space. I want to use the space to highlight, thank you, existing businesses and food producers already existing in the north with grab and go snack food, art, gifts, souvenirs, provide tourism, Smithers, Smithers information, and then of course, simple and reliable food and beverage services. I hope to create a space that will, that locals will want to use to come and have coffee with their friends or to work remotely or host a networking event from town council or anywhere else. And I want to highlight local businesses so that we can create a local and lasting economic impact. So I'm just here today to kind of introduce myself and, and follow up to that funding request and why it's there. So yeah, thank you for your support and thank you, Rob, and the airport team. And thanks for your time.
Thanks, Katie. Appreciate it. And as I said, there's no questions at this point. And the item comes up, you know, the name, the number. And so again, I welcome you to stay with us for the evening. And if you don't want to stay here, of course, you can join us on the live stream. So. But thank you and thanks for the enthusiastic presentation. Already, counsel. So where we're at is the, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if there's anyone else wanting to speak to something on the agenda before I move on. All right, then I am moving on. So next up is Item 7, which is the public opportunity to be heard. And I just have something I will read, so bear with me. This public opportunity is convened in accordance with the community charter to allow the public to make representations to council regarding bylaw number 1974, Hubert Street Road Closure and Highway Dedication Removal. The purpose of bylaw 1974 is to permanently close and dispose of the existing Hubert Street Road right-of-way, approximately 20 meters wide and 300 meters long, located diagonally between Lower Main Street and Riverside Drive. Once the bylaw is adopted, the land will be disposed of to the owners of the adjacent properties on the north side to enable a new residential development on the consolidated parcel. Those present who believe that your interests are affected by the proposed bylaw are provided this opportunity to be heard. Comments are welcome when speaking. Start with your name and address. So we're going to hold there. And I understand the issue that the gentleman in the back are here for, which I don't think is this one, but you're welcome to speak to this one if you want to. And otherwise, I'm going to move on to the next item. Okay. And I'm moving on. So then we are, and I'll just state for the record, it is in the agenda package. We did see, receive one letter from Mr. Bob Mitchell in regard to that, and council can consider that later in the agenda. And council can consider that later in the agenda. All right. So council, something I meant to say at the beginning, but we had lots of people wanting to speak to us is we're all aware of the size of the package that we've got. And it won't be the first time when I'm going to invite us to, if we all agree on something, to measure our words and save that for when we disagree or we have questions of curiosity. It's a pretty big package. Of course, you're entitled to speak when you want to, and I'll be looking for the hands. But I think we all have to be on our game tonight. First up, item 8.1, minutes from February 25th, please, for adoption. Councilor Bukama, Councilor Leonard, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And I'll look to Mr. Schroder. We have one item to be released to the public. Mr. Schroder?
Thank you very much, Mayor Attrell. Yes, this evening, council appoint, I made four appointments to the Accessibility Advisory Committee, that being Wilma Wickerink, Connor Kukel, Jody Latrice, and Lisa Kobu. These appointments were for three-year terms expiring March 14th, 2028. And further, council provided directions to staff to re-advertise and pursue membership for the vacant positions on the Accessibility Advisory Committee. So that posting will be coming up shortly.
Thanks, Mr. Schroder. Appreciate that. And council, I don't think we've got any business arising. So we're going to move on to council reports. I think that's where we are. 1111. Somehow I've lost my own pace here. So probably Councilor Bukama. You're usually first, Councilor Bukama.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Attrell. First of all, I'd like to move adoption of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting of February 24th.
Thanks, Councilor Bukama. Councilor Race, seconds. If there's any questions for Councilor Bukama. Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried, Councilor Bukama?
Okay, and then are you okay with me moving adoption of the March 4th minutes, including all four bolded motions as one? Or do you want them dealt with separately?
If it's possible, if we could have the motions adopted and the four bolded motions ratified separately. Okay.
You're just getting to the pages, Councilor Bukama. Okay, that's fine. Take a moment.
Okay, so do you, would, Mr. Schroder, would you like me to read each of the bolded motions?
I don't believe so unless there was a request from a member of council.
Sorry, just before we go on, Councilor Ray, are you trying to say something?
I was just gonna move the adoption of the minutes first.
I was gonna do that, but that's okay. That's totally fine. That's totally fine.
We'll just give Councilor Bukama a minute to catch up. So Councilor Ray has already moved, Councilor Bukama, you're seconding. Okay, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, Councilor Bukama?
Okay, and then I Mr. Schroder, I'm still not clear. Do I have to read each one separately?
Through, through the chair, you're not required to read each separately unless a member of council requested that we vote on. We divide the motion into four different parts and vote independently on each.
Then I'm gonna move adoption of all four bolded motions. Our agenda says three, but actually there's four.
Okay, so the motion is for all four. Is there a seconder? Councilor Raven, seconds. Was there anything you wanted to add to that, Councilor?
No, no.
Is there any discussion? So for any following along, this is in the Finance Committee of March 4th. And it was the motions that were made for the committee recommended to council. We're ready. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried.
And then finally, the visitor's center report for February is just there for information, but I am willing to entertain questions if there are any.
Any questions for Councilor Bukama? Seeing none, I will say thank you. Thanks for getting us through that part. And where are we? Next up, Councilor Elliott.
Nothing reported this time, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Elliott. Councilor Leonard.
Other than the two finance committee meetings we've had in the last week, I was a judge at Smithers Senior Secondary last Friday for the Grade Eight Science Fair. And it was fun. It was a fun hour to look at how creative they were. I appreciated it. And it was, yeah, it was fun to be a part of it.
That sounds fun. And thanks for being there. I think, I think you were there as well, Councilor Raven. I got the invitation and it's the second year when I've not been around to participate. But one year I will get to apply what I know to a science fair, judging. Be amazing. Thank you. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Attrell. There are community meeting minutes from Community CD and Bobby.
And do you want to just move adoption? I didn't hear you if you did that.
My apologies, Mayor. These ones are provided just for information and council is not required to adopt these.
Thanks, Councilor Patterson. You probably knew that and so didn't move it. So my apologies. Is there anything else that you'd like to report? Okay, thank you. And Councilor Raven?
My report is in the agenda. Just one piece to add. I was able to, on the 6th of March, was able to make it to the Bokke Marie's Forest Landscape Planning Open House. That was at the old church. It was very well attended. I showed up 15 minutes early and there were so many vehicles there. I thought I was actually late, but everyone was already in because they were so excited. When I was there, there was probably 30 to 40 people walking through. And then it was also really interesting because they also provided, there was one section on the Bokke Marie's Wildfire Resilience Project, which is through the Bokke Valley Research Center. So it's looking at different wildlife ecology and forest and fuel management practices that they're going to be trying in the area, which I found really fascinating.
Thanks, Councilor Raven. Councilor?
Nothing at this time.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. I was late, but I managed to type it up and get it printed. So I distributed my report to council and I can provide a copy to Ms. McKinley since obviously I forgot to do that. I think the only thing I'll note, so it's is just the meeting today, there was, the province has initiated a roundtable. They didn't call it that, but it's essentially a roundtable where they invited mares and chairs to participate just to discuss early on what the tariffs might mean. And this was an initiative that the province did during the early days of the pandemic. They ended up then doing weekly calls to mares and chairs, sort of describing what's the situation today. And we will touch back in a week from now. And the feedback that those on the call, so the ministers were rural community, Minister of State, Brittany Anderson, Municipal Affairs and Housing, Minister Calon, and the premier was on the call for a while. And so the idea was for the province to be able to say, what do we know today? Here's what we're doing. What are your issues? What do we need to take away? So I thought it was a fairly good first call. I think Mr. Dewar participated in the call as well. And so I just made a summary there. There were a lot of different interests from different communities. But the primary ones that I think came up was procurement, a lot of questions and discussions on procurement. We have regulations around procurement. How do we do things? Lots of municipalities are in purchase. Like we're in situ, we're buying things that are coming from south of the border. And while the province is urging people to shop Canadian as much as possible, there's a recognition that if we're partway through something and things have got to come, that's just the way it is. But there was sort of the, you know, the sentiment about bi-local. And we were also asked what, what were the concerns in our community? And the two things that I've heard most about so far, aside from disruption, are lumber, which the province is highly aware of, and the other one I raised was glass, since it was something that I was made aware of as something that's unusual and seemed a bit more peculiar perhaps to our community and other communities. So we just had an opportunity to either speak or to enter them into a commentary. So if counselors do hear things, specific concerns from businesses in town, I would appreciate just getting that update. We have a method to sort of file that up to the province. So that was kind of probably the one that seemed most critical to us as we go forward, not just the local government, but our community and businesses. And I'll leave it at that. So we'll just move on. We're up to staff reports. So we do have on the agenda package, first up, regarding the delegation number one from Access Smithers as a recommended motion from our staff, that we asked staff to provide a report with some more information. And that's probably wise. So Councilor Ray, are you making the motion?
Yes.
And a seconder, Councilor Bukama? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That one's carried. And then I have one suggestion. We could do it a couple of ways, but the second delegation was from the BV Museum. We have the staff report at 1413. We could do it either way. I was actually suggesting, I'm suggesting we bring forward 1413 right now. Because the staff recommendation just says that, anyway, I think the simpler way is just to deal with 1413. If you don't want to, we'll just deal with it in order, but I don't think we're gonna do both. We're not gonna ask another staff report, or that's my opinion. Did you want to add something? You look like you're hot on the mic there.
Thank you very much, Mayor Attrell. I was just going to advise that, yes, you are correct, 14.2. We don't need to deal with that. So council could skip along or do what they choose.
Okay, so we can do it either way. We can move forward or just deal with it in order. In order? Okay, we'll deal with it in order. Thank you. Okay, then we are at 14.3, a report from Ms. Smith, lease agreement for Aberdeen with the recommendation that we sign the lease. Councilor Elliott, moving? Both, both bullets? Okay, and Councilor Leonard is seconding. Any discussion, Councilor Ray?
I was just wondering on the waving section seven, it says by limiting the towns' rights for termination. Does that still leave the Aberdeen helicopters with the right to terminate in 30 days?
Mr. Schroder?
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, it does. Aberdeen has provided the opportunity to terminate the lease with notice to the town of Smithers. The town of Smithers has retained other rights to terminate the lease, however, both for non-compliance with the lease, non-compliance with airside requirements, and non-payment or default. So there are, there are still ways that the town could, if there were concerns for the leasing, choose to terminate that contract. What we've done is just limit our rights exclusively to just provide notice due to the capital investment that Aberdeen is intending to make with the site.
Good? Any other questions? I'm seeing none. I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried unanimously. We are at 14.4, report from Ms. McKinley on NCLGA Resolution Recommendation. We did receive a couple of requests from the Association for Mineral Exploration, so that's our next two. Council, what's your pleasure? We have a staff recommendation. Okay, I'm not hearing anything. I'm going to take that as direction. I'm going to move on. Oh, Councilor Patterson, I'm sorry, I just see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor Attrell. I just had a quick question for the resolutions. Are we voting on these particular resolutions or did we already do so?
We are looking at these resolutions and there are two separate staff reports. We can do them one at a time. These were a request from an external organization and staff have prepared sort of a little bit of a a variation on the direct ask. And we're aware through some of the narrative that other communities have been asked to do this as well. And my recollection is we had a bit of discussion on that part, on whether or not we may just support another community. So that's just my recollection of the memory of the discussion. But in fact, in this one, 14.4, it is the recommendation in front of you, including that one resolution. And then we deal with the second one separately.
Thank you for the clarification. If there was going to be a decision to move them all together, I would just say that I'm only in opposition of one, which would be the one that we're on right now, 14.4. So I can wait until it's on the table or even move it myself if necessary. And then I'll just make my comment as to why. But that's all from me. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Patterson. As I read the table, I'm reading that no one is going to move the motion, in which case we'll just move on. So there'd be no requirement to vote in opposition. Okay, and I'm not seeing a mover and a seconder. So I'm now turning to staff report 14.5, which is again, the NCLJ recommendation. This one on assessing and mitigating cumulative impacts, that one, so that we're all on the same page. And I'll look to council. What's your pleasure? Okay, I am moving on. I'm now at, unless, yep, I'm moving on. I'm at 14.6. Okay, 14.6, a report from Ms. Smith on the request we heard at the last meeting from the Bokke Valley Airshed Management Society with a recommendation. Councilor Ray?
I'll move the recommendation.
Sir, a seconder. Councilor Raven, seconds. Discussion. Councilor Elliott?
If we, maybe it's in the report and I fell asleep maybe reading it, but sorry. Have we funded them? Have we given, sorry, it's a long agenda. We funded the Bokke Valley Airshed before.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Attrell. We have provided funding previously to the BV Airshed Management Society in the past. We couldn't find the exact amount, but we could provide that as an update to council if that were a request.
Councilor Elliott, any other questions?
No, just in context to me, like if we have done that before, I would support doing it again.
Thanks, Councilor Elliott. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor Attrell. Just for information, being a member of the Bokke Valley Lakes Airshed Management Society, one of the comments that I had made at the table was just inquiring about what the $1,500 would go towards. So for example, when reading our Clean Air Shed Management Plan, it talks about all the partner organizations, including the town of Smithers hosting a workshop every five years where we're to review the plan, including the goals and key performance indicators to determine, are we doing just that? Are we meeting our targets that we set? So one of the conversations that we'd had at the table is, would that $1,500 go towards hosting that workshop? We would have that conversation together. So yeah, I just wanted to share that so that council was aware. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Patterson. Councilor Leonard?
I'm just getting my opposition on the record. I will be voting against, and basically for the same reasons that I voted against the mineral. Losing it, but the mineral exploration funding as well. I just don't think we should, it seems like it's fundraising in a sense, so I just prefer to stay away from it.
Thanks, Councilor Leonard. Councilor Ray?
I'm just, some more history, like we partnered with, with the Airshed Mountains Society on the purple purple air monitors. So it's been more of a partnership than maybe some of the other things that, so we have worked with them in the past. If I recall correctly, we had some, some input into the Clean Air Prop Plan. It was quite a while ago and I'm getting older, so I don't remember exactly what it was, but I do know that we were involved.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Okay, I'm gonna call a vote. All in favor? And opposed? The motion passes with Councilor Leonard opposed. All righty, thanks, folks. 14.7, we have a report from Airport Manager, Mr. Blackburn, who's with us this evening regarding the Airport Access Control Contract Award Recommendation. Councilor Ray, you're moving? Okay, a seconder. Councilor Elliott and discussion? Not seeing any questions. All in favor? Opposed? Oh, sorry, Councilor Patterson, I saw your hand go by there. Was there a question? Or was it still up from before?
Apologies, Your Worship. Were, was that 14.8 or 14.7?
14.7.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Yes.
All right, I'm actually just gonna recall the vote because I don't really remember how it went. So all in favor? Opposed? Opposed, that's carried unanimously, okay, thanks, Ms. McKinley. And then we're at fourteen eight, this is the Airport Cafe Operator Award. Again, report from Mr. Blackburn with Recommendation, three bullets. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Counsel Raven, moving all three, okay, is there a seconder? Counsel Ray seconds, and discussion. Counsel Patterson, was this the one you wanted to talk to?
Thank you, Worship, yes, just a process question through to staff. For the request for the thirty thousand for cafe equipment to make changes to the airport cafe space. Does that need to be referred to Finance Committee recognizing we're in budget setting, or is it appropriate to to vote on it as the recommendation states?
Mr. Doer.
Uh, we believe we can take care of it through the operational budget, so it doesn't have to be referred to the Finance Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Doer. Any other questions? Counsel Bukama and Counsel Ray.
I'm not a question, but just a comment, I I like the idea that. They're trying to run a more diversified operation at the airport, because I think. That's one of the reasons all the previous ones have failed, I I like their, the idea that they're going to sell other types of merchandise as well. I think it will lead to a greater chance of this particular effort being successful.
Thanks, Counsel Bukama, Counsel Ray.
I'm just speaking about the liquor license application, just. The standard that I said last time, just because I'm liquor store manager, this is a different branch of the liquor distribution, so. It's like your licensing, but also to note that we did give that. Letter of support to the last cafe as well.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Okay, I'm just gonna vocalize as well, I I think I've supported every variation. Of how we've tried to do this, I think food service at the airport is so important. We're trying to figure out how do we support our airport by delivering service, and I think this is creative, and Mr. Blackburn's tried. Working with all kinds of people over the years to create new ways of doing it, so I think this is really, it's a cool way to try it, so I appreciate the effort. And I think people are going to appreciate having the service at the airport as well, Counsel Elliot.
I support the motion, but I just had a question. When was the last time we we had invested some money into that space? Can someone answer that, how much money we spent initially to get it going, maybe some history about it?
Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Atral, the last time we invested was for the previous operator. We bought a new fridge, and it's a sandwich cooler that goes under the counter. And prior to that, that was about eighteen hundred dollars, I think, if my memory is correct. And and prior to that, very little for quite a long time.
Counsel Ray.
Yeah, it's just also a history, we used to pay somebody seventy thousand dollars a year to do it. Which I didn't support that kind of, so that makes the thirty thousand dollars, and the fact that we're still going to own that equipment. That makes that more palatable for me, the other thing that I kind of wanted to to just had popped into my head. Is that if if the cafe is going to try and do things outside of of. Outside of normal flying hours, just. So that the public knows that there are free parking spaces that you can park for up to an hour. So you don't have to, because I was, my original thought was, oh, you have to pay to park there, even if you're going for dinner, but you actually don't, so. As long as there's space is available, so just a good thing to know.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Okay, let's vote, all in favor? Any opposed, and that's carried. Okay, we are at fourteen nine, this is from the Canyon Creek Recreation Society, and with. A request for a letter of support and a recommendation that we give one. Counsel Raven moves, seconder. Counsel Bukama seconds, discussion? Counsel Leonard?
This one. Was a tough one for me, because I I just feel like there wasn't enough information given, and well, I do support recreation areas. In and around us, one, I don't know that it's. A municipal issue, because it's happening outside of our municipality, two. The briefing talks about. The logging. License has been given for part of of the area, but. Nowhere in the submission, have they given us any details on that? So I'm just struggling with sending a letter of support.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard, okay, I have Counsel Elliot, Counsel Patterson, Counsel Raven, Counsel Elliot.
Yeah, I I did actually look for some advice on this one. And I was actually. Just to see if I had to recuse myself from this one because of where I work. But it has nothing to do, it's it's a it's a BC timber sale, that has nothing to do with. Any specific company as of yet. I I've used that area too, it's a really nice area. And I agree that it. I I'd more like to write a letter to the Ministry of Forests. Or BC Timber Sales to maybe consult before they decide they want to do stuff like this. I don't agree with. Grant the authority to control access by licensees. I don't, that could be problematic. I don't feel like I want to write a letter stating that. I think that BC Timber Sales. Could be approached by letter or consultation. Both their plans for that area, I looked up the maps, I can't really see the mapping where the. The logging will take place. If that could be provided, I would. You know, be more clear for me, I I agree, there's, I need more information before I would want to write a letter to support.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot, Counsel Patterson, then Counsel Raven.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atral, so while I support protecting our wild spaces, and often I use Canyon Creek Trails. Without a map to better understand the area of logging and proximity of the trail. And including the uncertainty of any impacts, as noted in the letter, it says, there may be potential impacts. I don't feel that I have the information needed to make an informed decision. Including other examples from across the province that may warrant the need to change the provincial policy or regulation as requested, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson, Counsel Raven.
Um, so I I do believe that this warrants a letter of support from the town, and the reason that I believe that is. Recreational access is. A municipal concern, we have tourists that come in from out of town, we have residents that choose to live here because of the access to places like Canyon Creek. So that's where I do think that the town can play a role in a letter of support. And then also just looking at, I know people are concerned about the our profits, and. It seems like the only value that we give to our forests is when we cut the trees down. And I think that a lot of times there is more value in making these spaces available. Again, to tourists, but also to those who live here, like I made the conscious decision to move back to Smithers because of the access to the outdoors, and. I understand how significant these spaces are now, I can only imagine how much more impactful these spaces are going to be in the next twenty, thirty, forty years, as we do. Have more logging in the area, so I do fully support having a letter of support for the society.
Thanks, Counsel Raven, Counsel Ray.
Yeah, I um. I agree with what Counsel Raven said about. The the amenities in the area being important to the town, we've submitted. For backcountry skiing, for the mountain bike society, just mostly for grants, letters of support. I I'm just wondering if we should scale back this this letter, because the second part. Asking the societies that manage recreation sites. Have the right to control access, I think that's problematic. And even to protect it for ten years, but I feel it's a little bit strange when we're doing forest landscape planning. Until all of a sudden log a recreation site, I'm sure it's been in the plan for years, and. Nobody's trying to sneak in there and and get the recreation site before they can't, but I I'm just wondering if maybe. You know, even asking for a pause on logging until the forest landscape plans been produced.
Counsel Leonard, then I'll hop in.
I guess I'll just reiterate that, you know, without any of us really understanding the severity or or. Scale of the logging. Area on the recreational site, I just. I can't support a letter of support.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard, but I'm wondering, because part of this relates to a council not feeling we have enough information. I didn't get the sense when I spoke to the gentleman who were in the gallery earlier, that this was necessarily time critical. So perhaps this is an item that could be postponed, and we could invite. The folks from Canyon Creek to actually just come as a delegation to give us information, or to perhaps deliver it another way, so. There might be something about just postponing until more information is received, and we could work with staff then to figure out how that's done, whether it's best done through information. Additional information or a delegation if the timing suits, so I see Counsel Patterson, then I'm going to look to staff.
Thank you, Your Worship, just a a point of. Support, and that Counselor Ray made a a good point, and that he recognized that the FLP planning process is underway. And recognizing that the there are people. Who may be listening into the conversation, that that's actually a really great avenue to continue to have the more strategic conversations about long-term planning, so just a. Yeah, he raised a good point.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson, Counsel Bukama.
I like the idea too of getting additional information before we make a decision, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel, the the one thing I didn't say, because I'm looking for a way forward, but also I generally support this, I think. We have recreation sites that ride on the backs of volunteers, and you could see from my report that I handed out, I spent some time. Last week in a session with the ODR Rec Council that are actually trying to provide a value statement. On how many billions of dollars are delivered to the provincial economy on the backs of volunteers on trail networks, so that that's a little bit separate. From this specific, but generally speaking, I'm super supportive of the fact that people, when they put in a lot of energy to create a recreation facility. That we as a society be aware of the impact of that. So if we're going to enable volunteers to go out and work on the provincial land base to create a recreation facility. We need to be aware of what the long-term implication of that is too, that when we come in ten years later. And alter it, that we have taken away some of that value, so. I'm going to go to Counsel Elliot, but I'm going to get my process back in order here, so we do have the motion on the table. I'm going to hear from Counsel Elliot, and then probably I'll look to counsel to see if you want to have some direction. About setting this aside for now in favor of information, but Counsel Elliot.
I just want to reiterate. I would not want to see this, these trails obliterated, right, I wouldn't. I I think there's more pieces to this puzzle that I would like to see. To have it land logged and destroyed, I would not before that. Yeah, there's value in forests economically and. Socially, I like going out in the woods, I like walking trails. And I know those trails have been there, and they've been worked on lots of times. For a lot of years, they're very valuable to the community, I realize this too. I'm just not going to write a letter. Carte blanche to say we will have the access rights to those areas. There has to be some, something in the Ministry of Forests or in the BC Timber Sales. Like this didn't just come up on the radar yesterday, or this is planned a long time in advance. When they do these sales, it's, you know, five, you know, ten years of planning to do this. I hope they they realize that there's trails there, or someone, there's some disconnect there. I just think there's some pieces that I'd like to see before I support a letter supporting the ask in here.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot, I do think one of the dilemmas that we face is that. People who are doing their jobs are doing their jobs, and I think without malice, I heard from a business owner today who operates a wilderness business. And who realized that there will be logging a very short distance from their lodge. I don't think that happens with malice, but it doesn't mean there's not impact, and so I think what we might learn through the information gathering is how do we support something that. Allows these volunteer-supported recreational trails to receive the maximum protection. Also recognizing. It's my view that we can't ask our volunteers who are trail management experts to become experts in legislation around forest management, so I think. That's sort of the disconnect that I'm seeing, how do we afford? Some support for that. When we have experts operating independently, trying to deliver maximum value to forest companies as well, we just have a little glitch, I think, so. With that, if counsel is interested in having more information, probably the simplest motion might be. Postponement until the information can be presented, and that leaves some room on whether it's paper information or a delegation, there's some flexibility there, so. Counsel Bukama?
Uh, I'm willing to move postponement.
Uh, just for clarity, postponement, if you want something to happen, requires the statement of postponement until when, otherwise postponement is indefinite.
It'd be good to know what's a reasonable amount of time from a member of staff.
I think Counsel Bukama, I'm sorry to interrupt, it could be until. Information expanding on this is received, and it leaves flexibility then on whether it's a delegation or.
Okay.
If that works, Ms. McKinley, okay, if you're good with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you seconding? Counsel Ray is seconding, but he wants to speak.
I I just want to make sure, and I I know what the gentleman are volunteers, but I don't want a lot of staff time spent into this, I'd like more information to come from the proponent. And not a lot of work put on the staff.
Thanks, Counsel Ray, I wasn't actually indicating that, I was just trying to leave flexibility. In how we invite that extra information, because I started out saying a delegation, but that may not be necessary, so that's why I just said until. The information is available, and however it comes. Counsel, sorry, I I was out of order in saying that, I'm a, we have a motion to postpone, there's no discussion. We're both out of order. To the motion to postpone until further information is available, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried, thanks. Okay, how are folks doing? You could use a little break, okay, it is seven forty-five, we still have a lot of stuff in front of us, so let's take a break, ten minutes, seven fifty-five. You could use a little break. Okay, it is 7:45. We still have a lot of stuff in front of us, so let's take a break 10 minutes. 7:55. We're back. Um, okay, we are reconvened 7:55. Thanks, everyone. And we are at item 1410. Report from Mr. Lee, excuse me, on the protected bicycle lanes, Queen to King. And there is a recommendation. Um, however, if there are questions of curiosity or clarity, I'll entertain those first. Counselor Raven?
A question of curiosity. So um, at the previous meeting, there was a motion to look at all possible crosstown routes. And then I noticed that this recommendation, it's still going down third. So I was just wondering if other routes were considered.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Atrol. Um, it might not be fully evident in the, in the report, but that was the purpose for attaching the minutes from the last meeting was to ensure council that, that the other, all possible route, other routes other than third will be considered. And that's a probably more than half of the um, requirements for the proponent is, or the consultant is to during the public engagement to go through that full process of looking at the alternative routes.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was still on the board, because I was a little bit confused with the report. So thank you for that clarity.
Thanks, Counselor Raven. Counselor Bukama?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Atrol. Um, I share the same concern. Um, I remember us having a discussion about this roughly a year or so ago. Uh, when I look at that two-block stretch, I think it is probably the busiest two-block stretch in all of downtown. And when I think of Home Hardware, the post office, Heartstrings, the brewery, and a soon-to-be-completed medical clinic, all being in that stretch, um, adding two protected bicycle lanes to me, it just doesn't seem like the best place for it. So I hope the community engagement process will allow for the community to say that, if that's how they feel about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bukama. Yeah, and uh, thanks for the explanation, Mr. Allen. I picked that up when I was reading it, that really this is to support the engagement. So I'm in favor. Any other comments? Counselor Ray?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure that I'm in favor. I feel a little uncomfortable saying that, because I've been pretty vocal about not wanting to do the bike routes, but given our recent discussions on staff capacity, on budget capacity, well, budget, I mean, if this is RBA, I guess it would be okay, but I'm, I'm done saying we could use RPA for things, because I'm wrong all the time. Um, but really, uh, you know, I, the 30,000 isn't a problem. It's ground-funded and, and sometimes I don't like to say, okay, we're not going to do grants, but I'm actually really concerned that we're just gonna go through a process and then we're not going to be able to implement whatever is decided. You know, even if it's something that we all like, is it, is it going to be something that we can implement in any kind of timeframe? Where if we don't implement it for five or six years, things change a bit downtown. The conclusion might not be the same in five or six years. So just one of those, is, is it just gonna be a plan that just sits on the shelf and gathers dust, because we don't have capacity to do it?
Uh, thanks, Counselor Ray. I see you, Counselor Patterson. I just wanted to um, put that to staff. I mean, we do have the recommendation from staff. It's to hire external support to get this done. It has been at the direction of council, so I'll just ask, is there something that staff is confident will happen by the deadline? Mr. Allen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atrol. Yes, the um, for this project, there's a definite commitment to uh, complete the project uh, before the end of June this year. Um, that's, the staff have received, I think, two uh, extensions now to the, to the two grants. And there won't be a third, so uh, there, that's, that's a commitment. And then uh, you know, once the design is completed and um, and which would include uh, cost estimates uh, for whatever is decided upon in, in, in the protected bike lanes and the routes, um, that would be brought back to council for budget discussions. And um, yeah, it's not anticipated that, especially this project would be, would sit on the shelf uh, or be postponed, because it is, it was identified as the number one uh, big move in the active transportation plan. Uh, the bicycle uh, lanes that we installed on King Street were the, they were the second uh, big move. So there is a, there was a, a real focus uh, and, and the consultant that wrote the active transportation plan and the community were all uh, behind that, uh, the, the, the five big moves with this being the number one.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Um, I see you, Counselor Ray, but I've got Counselor Patterson. So I'm gonna go to her first, then I'll come back to you. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I recognize that a, a motion hasn't been made yet. Are you okay if I just continue with my comments? Or are you looking for that first?
I actually forgot we didn't have a motion, so either or, if you want to make a motion, that's fine. It's always in order and otherwise I'll hear your comments.
Okay, excellent. I'll, I'll go ahead and move it if you wish, and then I'll make my comments.
Sorry, Counselor Patterson, you broke up a bit there. I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I was just saying, I'm, I'm willing to, to move the recommendation and then I have comments.
Okay, Counselor Patterson moves a recommendation. Do I have a second or Counselor Raven seconds? Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atrol. So um, I am in support of um, the assessment of a potential location for a uh, protected bicycle lane uh, in downtown. Um, just hearing that I wasn't the only counselor that was confused based on the title of the recommendation and recognizing that um, clarity matters um, in, in that other people may get confused as well. I just wanted to ask staff, is it possible to change the language to remove from Queen Street to King Street and just leave it open to um, the downtown protected bike lane um, contract award, or does it have to be specific to those particular streets?
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, thank you, uh, through Mayor Atrol. Um, staff removed uh, Third Avenue Protected Bike Lane, uh, recognizing that alternative routes are to be um, you know, investigated. Um, but since this is a east-west uh, cycling connector uh, with currently the Third Avenue is the cycling um, east-west connector in the community. Um, it, yeah, we're, it, it, the, the main objective is to provide a safe bike route from through the downtown core between Queen and King uh, crossing Main Street. So um, whether that's on Third or Second or First, that's yet to be determined, but um, that was the identif, that was the identified uh, you know, priority number one, a big move in the active transportation plan.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I have no, no doubt the staff will do this part of it. It's just whether we're gonna want to do it later. And um, so that, I've said my piece on that and I'm going to vote against it, because I've been voting against this since the act of transportation plan. I don't like plans with big moves in them, because they commit us to things that haven't been taken in the whole context of our overall budgetary and, and uh, strategies.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Counselor Bukama?
Uh, I'm also gonna be a no vote, because I have a deep fear that a Queen to King um, protected bike lane on um, Third Avenue is actually gonna happen, and I just don't think it's good for the community. So I'm gonna be a no vote.
Counselor Bukama? Counselor Leonard?
I will also be a no vote. Um, I think I expressed my, my opposition to it being down third, which was sort of um, part of that discussion last year. Um, but I, you know, thinking this through and rereading um, um, the submission, I um, you know, I, I wasn't part of the active transportation plan. I wasn't a counselor then, so um, I just questioned the need for a protected bike lane in Smithers and um, you know, be happy to look at data, accident data if people are getting hit um, on bicycles. Absent of that, um, I would be opposed to them.
Thanks, Counselor Leonard. Counselor Elliott?
I'll be opposed as well. Um, basically what all the other counselors have been saying. Um, met with some business owners and down that street, oh, a while, a year ago or more. And that was quite concerning and for me, it's concerning too, just the congestion in that area. And I'm not against encouraging bicycle use in Smithers, but I think there has to be a better alternative, and I'll be voting against the uh, recommendation.
Thanks. I'm gonna go to Counselor Raven. I'm just gonna remind council that what's in front of us is actually an engagement to determine where the route would be. And council expressed fairly strongly at the last time that there was concerns with Third. And also remind council to please keep an open mind that we did have an active transportation plan that made recommendations based on community feedback. And one of the dilemmas we face is how do people get across town? There is no way to get across town that doesn't involve Queen and King. They extend the length of the community. So if, if you're not interested in active transportation corridors, then I think we're on the right path. There is no way to go across town without using King and Queen. There, they are the routes from Whale Way to the hill, like there's no other way. So this is simply to gather public input on how they would like to actually do that crosstown move. So um, Mr. Allen has already said, and it is in the, the documents here, that this is to engagement, to do engagement with the public on how they want that. And it was very clear, at least in my memory, when we did the act of transportation plan, including the number of people in this gallery, how much interest there was in providing safe transportation routes. Counselor Raven?
So I'm gonna apologize, because um, while trying to clarify that it was not going to be necessarily on Third Ave, it seems to have targeted it being Third Ave. So I just wanted to say again, is I, I fully support um, how we can navigate going How we can navigate going from King to Queen safely. And a protected bike lane may be the answer. Regardless of where the bike lane goes, Third Avenue is already congested, so as it stands, that's where the bike lane is. So without having this study, that's where it's going to remain. The study may show that it actually is better elsewhere, which is then gives us the opportunity to move it. So without doing this public consultation, we don't get that. Feedback and it stays as it is. So my personal thoughts again is on Third Ave are what they are. But without having this data and having this uh, community engagement happen, nothing will change. And then I think we actually run the risk of. How starting to have accidents and all of that. So what I was trying to clarify is that I didn't want it. To be focused on Third Avenue. I want the public consultation piece, so I fully support this report. I fully support um, getting the. Community feedback on this with the understanding that it is not set on Third Avenue and we do need King to Queen access. So whether that's Fourth Ave, Broadway, whatever it is, let's let's have that. Consultation and find out where the best place for it is. Otherwise, it will remain where it is right now.
Thanks, Councilor Raven. Okay, I have Counselor Patterson, Counselor Ray, Counselor Leonard. That's where I'm at so far. Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Rachel. I just wanted to share um, after buying my home in the last two years um, in Smithers near uh, just on. Queen Street there. Um, I live around the corner of Columbia Drive right next to Tim Hortons. And my normal bike route um, is actually just through that main intersection down to Town Hall. Uh, or to Northwest Fitness, to the Nora Building on Alfred Avenue. Just on Main Street and Home. It's not a very big route uh, that I take. But I would just say I'm shocked at every single day that I ride my bike in the summer, which is almost every single day. I'm almost hit multiple times and I'm not talking just, you know, oh, that was sort of close. I've literally had to push off of moving vehicles who don't see me. And I would say ninety percent of the time that I'm uh, almost hit, it's because someone's been on their cell phone. They're just not paying attention. The amount of people that also run four-way stops um, is quite astounding to me, and I think this council has been patient and listening to me um, sort of complain about. Traffic and my significant concerns that I see around uh, traffic within our community and um, I just want to say that. While I am also opposed to Third Avenue, just given the significant amount of congestion, I am. Very much interested in looking at any alternatives that we can to creating safer spaces to bike. I would just say, you know, as a new mom, I will never let my son bike in our community ever. Um, you know, I'm able to move out of the way from an oncoming traffic, but the amount of times that I've seen people almost hit small children. The reason why I'm voting in favor of this is I would love to see a safe bike route for children and their parents whilst um, going across town. Just um. Again, it's shocking, but there's not a whole lot I can do uh, about it. And if I was to create a mere miss report every single time. Um, yeah, it it would there would be many, 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 many. So I really appreciate uh, council listening. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Patterson, Councilor Ray, then Councilor Leonard.
Um, just a couple of things. Mayor Rachel, I I I recognize what you're saying and I I appreciate that this task gone out and tried to do. To do what councils voted for and, you know, I sometimes it's difficult to. When you haven't supported anything from the beginning, council did pass the act of transportation and and all that, so. It is hard. I voted against King Street. Bike lane as well. I think for cyclists, it's been a success. Uh, I don't feel any safer than I did riding along King Street before. To me, a little white line doesn't protect you from anything. But it's caused problem with parking because we don't have parking there anymore and I just think part of. Putting something protected through downtown. Is going to really highly impact the parking, no matter where it goes. And the other thing is, we do have sharos on Third Avenue and between King Street and Queen Street. It's darn near impossible for a moving vehicle to exceed thirty kilometers an hour because there's so many people parked. There's so many people coming and going. It's actually one place in the community where a bicycle can be part of traffic and not be impeding traffic. And in my opinion, it's probably safer to be in if I'm riding my bike. If a child isn't, that's different, I guess. But if I'm riding my bike, I'd rather be in traffic there than on. A bike lane where somebody might open their door where um, you know. If it's on the sidewalk next to pedestrians, I don't think that's safe for pedestrians, so I do have reasons for not wanting to do it, but. Um, again, so I just wanted to clarify that that that's, I'm not being ob- well, I may am being obstinate, but it's. It's something that I've been fairly consistent to it all along.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Councilor Leonard?
I do support um, active transportation. Um, I have a bike. I ride it all the time. I could be persuaded to um, support this motion. If um, the consideration of protected bike lanes was was also part of that public consultation. I feel like ultimately, well, we're going to do this this um, report and public consultation. And then we're going to have to pay for it too and um. You know, the cost of of bike lane, painting bike lanes versus actual um, protected lanes will be. Far less for us.
Thanks, Councilor Leonard. Um, I'm going to give myself the opportunity to speak again. I think. You know, I think it does matter that the presentation for the act of transportation plan was a long time ago. And the act of transportation plan was created after a fairly long consultation with the public. And the things that were defined in that plan were the best practices available. So the way to keep people safe is actually unprotected lanes. There's been a lot of discussion of one route. Um. I've heard at this table when there's been other discussions that sometimes businesses change locations. And what we think is busy today might not be busy five years from now. I've stood downtown with business owners who've also suggested there might be other ways to do it. We have, I I don't actually know, but we also have lanes. We have all kinds of opportunity. If we're willing to hear from the public about how we might do this and it is an east-west connector. So I think the best practice for a community that's trying to figure out its future. Is how do we protect people and provide opportunity for people to be. Actively moving through the community. It's for health. Um, you know, we also, I mean, counselors all have their own opinion, but we have. A climate action strategy, part of that requires would would benefit by people actually getting out of their cars on those short routes. And being either on foot. On another other devices, so. If, you know, part of what I heard tonight and the reason I'm concerned is it sounded like we're doing a no to the act of transportation plan. This is the next step. So if counselors actually don't believe in the act of transportation plan, that's a different thing, but this is just an opportunity. To ask the people who who want to move other ways. How, what's going to best suit them? And so definitely, the people who are in cars and who run businesses are a part of that. But the community is the whole community. And we hear from people often on subjects you hear for the person who holds it most dear and we hear from others. This is about the entire community and I I just feel like the 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 essence of the act of transportation plan has slipped. So I'm definitely going to support it. This is an information gathering process and um. Yeah, I think. It behooves us to do this to figure out what the citizens want at this point. In order to keep this plan alive, because if we don't do this, what part of the act of transportation plan are we actually going to hold up? Councilor Bukama?
And I think some of our opposition is being misunderstood here, like I am not opposed to an active transportation plan. I am opposed to. That two-block stretch having two protected bike lanes. I just feel like it's not. The right route. It is such a such a congested stretch. You could drive down there almost any time of day and there's cars parked on both sides. And it just does not seem the right route to me. Am I opposed to active transportation? Not at all. Um. I'm just opposed to that two-block stretch being used for the these two protected bike lanes.
I hear you, Councilor Bukama, and you've you've said it. Others have said it. What's in front of us is a request to do a community consultation. I think staff have well and truly heard that there's a threshold of people in this community who are not going to support a certain route. What I'm hearing is that people are willing to put that in front of gathering information, so. I'm urging people to consider what's in front of you and that we're required to have an open mind. And be willing to hear the information. So unless there's any flash hands, I'm going to call the vote. The recommendation is on the table. All in favor? And opposed? The motion is defeated with Counselor Leonard, Counselor Elliot, Counselor Ray, and Counselor Bukama opposed. Thanks. Okay, um, we are at fourteen eleven. Report from Mr. Allen. Airport South Navigation Light Base Contract. Anyone want to put that on the table? Counselor Raven moves. Counselor Elliot seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that one's carried unanimously. Fourteen-two from Ms. Bearman, uh, recommendation to approve the economic development plan. Councilor Raven moves. Counselor uh, Leonard seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Apo- oh, sorry, Counselor Patterson?
Apologies, Your Worship. There seems to be a bit of delay on my on my end. Um, so given that the purpose of the plan. Um, is to reflect the current economic landscape and serve as a decision-making tool over the next five years, um, including setting investment priorities and more. Um, I was hoping to get a better standing of what approaches staff um, might recommend to ensure that we're considering. Um, have to support our local economy um, amidst the tariff war. Um, so for example, just what options might be available to us, such as advertising has been recommended by the province. Or what some other municipalities are doing, such as uh, temporary fee reductions or. Property tax deferrals for commercial or light industrial properties. I'm just not sure um. If I'm prepared, recognizing that the draft plan is just that draft, um, but I had a. A subsequent motion for council's consideration on how we might support ongoing dialogue um, amidst um, the tariff war. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Patterson. I'm going to turn it to Mr. Dour. However, this isn't a draft. This is the final plan for approval. Mr. Dour?
Uh, yeah, so with this um, economic development strategy or economic development plan. Basically, it's just setting a guiding course for the next five years as to what the opportunities are for the community, uh, where we're presently at and what the challenges may be. Um, it's one that is reactive to everything that may or may not happen over the course of the next five years. Um, in terms of the tariffs, it's one that certainly staff are paying uh, a lot of attention to and staying abreast to your conversations here in the community as well as. Um, you know, across Canada as a whole, and it's certainly one that we will be looking at opportunities to support our community. And make sure that uh, um, council's staying updated as to what opportunities and challenges are arising from the tariffs. But I would say that the tariffs um, right now by no means um, impact the the work that's gone into this uh, guiding document for. Our economic development plan.
Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Rachel. So thank you for the um, clarification from staff and clarity on the the plan being uh, not draft but final. So um. Maybe a question through to staff, if I may, specific to um, sort of. Broader um, economics in the conversation around tariffs. So. I've heard that there have been conversations that have been happening and I I'm just curious, um, my motion tries to get at creating space. On our standing committee, the holes around um, how to support our local economy amidst the tariff war and I I'm just curious. Um, maybe if um, staff can comment on, do we feel that? It would come from staff to council when we need to have conversations around how to support our local economy, or is it? More driven from council through to the request to staff. Thank you.
Um, Counselor Patterson, I'm just going to hop in because um. It's been very uh, short conversation that I've had with staff about. Uh, starting up, I'm just going to call them roundtables. So for those who are on council during the pandemic, we held roundtables with the business community to. Uh, just try to figure out the things you're talking about. So I I I don't know that that's necessarily connected with the plan. Um, I realize it's an economic question, but the plan is sort of that long-term guiding document and we could certainly have a. Conversation about how council ought to reach out or the town through that staff. Could reach out to sectors within the community as we go forward in the tariff issue. Um, but I think we were probably okay. With my view, that we'd be okay to accept the economic development plan and if you have, uh, you know, something you wanted to raise. Uh, specific to that outreach, um. Either we could do it at a follow-up meeting, or if it's the pleasure of council, we'll hear it now, but I think we'll kind of. Deal with the economic development plan and I'll leave it to you. To consider how you might want to bring that next motion forward, if that works. But o- over to Mr. Dour.
No, I think uh, my sentiments echo uh, the mayor's comments that uh, certainly council has the capacity at any point in time to bring forward a notice of motion. And that's one that you'd like to propose uh, um, you know, a deeper discussion, whether at a committee of the whole. Um, or in another environment, uh, certainly you have that uh, opportunity to do such. Um, but yeah, with this one, right now, the the item, uh, the business item that's on the table is. Uh, whether or not council wishes to adopt the economic development strategy, which has been developed is the long-term guiding strategy. Um, and from a staff perspective, we feel like uh, um, yeah, the tariffs, although. It's something that's outside of the scope of this and it's something new to us, uh, it doesn't impact the economic development plan.
Counselor Patterson, follow him?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Rachel, and thank you to yourself and uh, through to staff for uh, those comments. Um, and I agree that um, I will send a follow-up uh, for council's consideration on the notice of motion. Um, and just a point of clarification, I think um. It was really at the essence of that first bullet in the purpose statement is that the plan is to reflect the current economic landscape. And when I read it, there's a specific um, number of goals and actions, so um. I guess, recognizing that as things progress, if there are recommended goals and uh, and actions that. The community feels is necessary, that I guess we would just deal with that uh, as it comes. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Patterson. Counselor Ray?
Yeah, not to get too deep into it. I I understand what you're saying about reflecting the current economic landscape, but. The the underlying landscape hasn't changed. There's there's tariffs and uncertainty, but. I think. That what I like about this plan is that really. A lot could change and it's still fairly. Um, foundational and that, you know, we we may wish to have staff working on roundtables, et cetera, but these are the things that they can be. Working on at all times, uh, no matter, you know, what the what the um. Landscape is because it's very diversified. Um, it's not. Just focused on one sector or anything, so I I that's why I'll support it.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Councilor Bukama?
Thanks, Mayor Rachel. Yeah, I really appreciate the five goals that are outlined in the plan. I think they're really well thought out. They're broad. And uh, I definitely will be supporting the plan.
Thanks. Okay, I can't remember. Is it moved and seconded? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried unanimously. Okay, we're at fourteen-three, the Heritage Register, and there is a recommendation. Uh, two bullets. Someone wants to put that on the table? Counselor Ray moves. Counselor Raven seconds. Any discussion? Counselor Ray?
Just really briefly, the I appreciate the work that was put into it. I remember attending the the public engagement and. There were all sorts of ideas being thrown out and all which had merit, but they've managed to um, boil it down to a. A fairly um, well-representative, but not every place in town kind of list, so I appreciate. And I appreciate that we're able to add or subtract as as conditions dictate.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Councilor Bukama?
Yeah, I also uh, very much appreciate the document. I think there's just a wonderful, wonderful variety of. Of places in the in like the twenty-four, there's just a tremendous diversity there and. I, as I said earlier in the evening, I feel like if we could attach plaques or signage to all of them, I think it's something that would really enrich our community.
Okay, I don't see any other hands. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay, he had to leave. He had an emergency. Report from Mr. Herzog. We can talk about him. He's not in the room. Okay, we have a recommendation from Mr. Herzog and the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund, et cetera. Council Bukama?
I'll move the recommendation.
Council Ray seconds. Any discussion? It'd be more fun to tease him if he was here, so I'll just call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay. And I am teasing him, but he responded to an emergency, and we're all grateful for the emergency workers who answer those pages. Um, we are up to the fifteens. We have a report from, um, Ms. McKinley, who has given us the final look at the resolutions that we asked for. So is any feedback? Now is the moment, Council Ray?
Um, the feedback actually is, is we let the other two pass by without taking any motion, but, um, just wanted to make sure that mention our appreciation, my appreciation for the work that went into those two reports. Um, some diet has nothing to do with the quality of the report. Um, and I did appreciate it.
Thanks, Council Ray. Okay. Anything on any of them that people wanted to talk about? Okay, fifteen. So thanks, Ms. McKinley. And we see, um, the next one was fifteen-three, then, of course, keeping all the resolutions, municipal markers, if there's any comments or questions for staff. Okay, and I'm moving up to sixteen-one, uh, report from Mr. Allen. This is the road closing by, bylaw, byway, bylaw. Let me catch up. So we are I'm following this, consider rescinding third reading. Council Ray moves?
I'll move the, the whole first part of the, of the recommendation, which includes removing the existing map and adding the reference.
Okay. And, okay, bullet one, seconder, please. Council Raven, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And bullet two? Council Ray?
I'll move third reading of nineteen seventy-four.
Council Raven seconds. Discussion? Was that discussion, Council Bukama, your voting? Counselor Leonard?
Isn't it nineteen eighty-seven?
Oh, I was just reading it right out of the. Oh, my bad. There's, um, my bad, there.
Oh, I, I'm actually on the page, the, the bullet page. Sorry, I'm not helping. I see the two bullets there. So I heard Council Ray moved the first one, but perhaps it's all of them. Ms. McKinley, how about you help us? What do you think we just moved?
Um, so what I have here is, uh, that Ray and Raven, um, moved the first recommendation, uh, which was the first half. And then I also have the same as I believe, uh, Council Ray is talking about right now, that bylaw number nineteen seventy-four, Hubert Street Road closure and highway dedication removal be read a third time as another motion.
I, I heard it the same way. Sorry, Council Raven. I, okay, that's fine, better to be clear. Yeah, I'm just looking at the bullets versus the agenda. Um, so for clarity, we are at, uh, third reading. That's what Ms. McKinley has. That's where we are. All in favor? No, sorry, you have a question?
Uh, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Mitchell's letter. Um, some of the things that have gone on there historically, kind of, I know they have happened. Um, but the one thing that I wanted to do is, is there are floodplain regulations, and people will have to apply to build there. So that's, that gives me comfort that this is the right thing to do. And then he made some suggestions that we might want to look at later on, but I, I think that as far as the bylaw, I think that that's the important thing, is that there are floodplain building regulations.
Thanks, Council Ray. Anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Alrighty, so now I think where we are is bylaw nineteen eighty-seven, um, item sixteen-point-two on the agenda. So this is the updated zoning bylaw. So we're gonna just tackle first reading. A mover, please, for first reading. Counselor Ray, Council Bukama, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Second reading, please. Council Raven, Council Elliot, no, Council Leonard, sorry, Council Leonard, um, discussion. You still have your mic on? Did you want to talk? Okay. Not hearing anything. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. And the, the third bullet, Council Ray?
I'll read that. I'll move that bylaw nineteen eighty-seven proceed to public hearing upon receiving preapproval from the Ministry of Transport and Transit.
And a seconder, please. Council Leonard. Okay, any discussion? Before we vote, I'm just gonna acknowledge what's gone into this thing. It's, uh, thanks, Ms. Chandran, Mr. Allen, whoever you've recruited in your department to help with this over the, uh, length of time, lots of issues addressed here, so thank you for that. And I just have one other question, it's just on the public hearing portion. Can you just, um, give me a little lesson on, so this one still requires the public hearing, but it's housing applications that don't? Ms. Chandran?
Uh, thank you to Mayor Atchell. Yeah, this one wouldn't fall within the purview of the, uh, small-scale multi-unit housing related amendments. This is, this is, uh, the, I mean, the change is proposed is extensive, and that's why we are calling it as an update. And the small-related, uh, public hearing exem, ex, exemptions are applicable only where new housing units are created, uh, through zoning amendments. Um, and also for units, um, in like, sometimes even in downtown, where, um, a proposed development is going to create at least fifty percent of residential space in the building. So, uh, none of that apply in this case, so it will have to go through a typical public hearing process.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, not seeing any hands, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Then I think we're just going to the eighteen's. We don't have anything under correspondence for action. Anything that people want to pull out of the eighteen's? Council Ray?
Eighteen-six.
Okay, eighteen-six? Eighteen, sorry, three, eighteen-three? Check my own notes here. I'm going to, um, rise eighteen-two. And I had eighteen-three, sorry, okay. I guess I'm first, if there's nothing else, eighteen-two is the first one. I just wanted to comment on it because I think the letter and the request are amazing. I'm sorry, it's coming to us late. Um, the event is happening. I think it, it is just worth acknowledging the number of people that are coming, the activity that's happening on the mountain, and the attention that the community will get. And, um, you know, it's hard to ask volunteers who do put on spectacular events to think of us sooner. But if I could think of something that we could do quickly to support this, I'd be all in. Even it's too late for signage, like, so I think there are things that we could do if people just gave us a little bit more notice, and I say that understanding that the volunteers are up to their ears and trying to figure it out. But I wanted to acknowledge what they're doing, and if anyone thinks of a fast, amazing way to support them, call me. I'd love to be able to figure it out with you. So, Council Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Atchell. So I had also flagged eighteen-two, and, um, just to collaborate with you on that comment, I believe that one of the requests was to do a social media post. So, um, if I may, if a, a motion is required, um, I'm happy to, to do so.
I don't know if we, we need a motion, and I'm not sure anyone here really knows. You're, you're just suggesting using our social platforms to say something that, okay, Mr. Dour.
That's what they, that's what they requested, yes.
What we can do is just look and see how it aligns to our social media policy, but we'd wanted to hear to that. So, um, whether you want to make a motion, or else we can just take that away of staff and see if, uh, are we able to share something according to our social media policy?
So probably if staff are just willing to take it away, that covers it unless you had something specific that you wanted them to. But I think this is like now just doing some collaboration, seeing what we can do internally, and then anyone else who has, um, you know, if you have your own social pages, feel free to share and to give accolades. Okay. I'm gonna move on eighteen-three. Um, I don't remember who raised it. Council Bukama?
Thanks, Mayor Atchell. Um, I just wanted to address a couple of the things that were in that letter. Uh, first of all, um, the writer is questioning the amount of money we're spending on roads and suggesting it's not very much. And I just wanted to make it public that we have potentially okayed up to two million dollars to be spent on roads and sidewalks. I think it's good that that information just be made public. And, um, also, the writer is questioning why we would have a childcare facility in our budget. And I just wanted to say that we've applied for grant funding. It's not something in our budget. And I also just wanted to highlight the fact how short we are a date of childcare spaces in this community. It's something that's badly needed.
Thanks, Council Bukama.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one was eighteen-six, Council Ray.
I'll, I'll move that the slider be referred to the Fall Fair Management Committee.
Is there a seconder? Council Raven seconds?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I just think it's the kind of thing that the Fall Fair Management Committee needs to know about. I know, I realize it was addressed to Smithers Town Council, so, um, but just there are some questions in here that we could discuss. There's other questions that maybe, you know, I'm not really too sure if the financials of the Fall Fairman, uh, is, is really a public item, but it's something we could talk about at the committee, for sure.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Anything else? One last ticket, whoever's there? Okay, asking you to hold your words worked. I didn't think we'd be out of here yet. Um, I think we're there. So thanks to staff. A lot of work went into this agenda. Yeah, it's been a while since we've seen one with this many pages. So thanks, everyone, for all your work. And I'll look for the motion to adjourn, please. Council Raven? Council Ray? All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Council Patterson.
Good night.